This time we will lock all this meeting to order. May I have a roll call, please?
Here.
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 Here. If you'd all rise for the pledge of allegiance led by trustee Doro. I'm sorry, trustee Lucky.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Trustee Lucky, I'm sorry for my mistake.
I'm sorry. She's good looking. It works out.
At this time, we have a swearing in of an officer, Zachary Bell.
Hey, anybody doing photos?
I'm going to stand next to you so you also can see what I'm doing. It makes it a little bit easier.
Joe, if you want to do it for the TV or no?
Sure, you want to turn and stand here? We'll face that way. If you just want to spin it like a rock, please. Sure. If you would raise your right hand. I, Zachary T. Bell.
I, Zachary T. Bell.
Do solemnly swear that I will support and comply with the Constitution of the United States of America.
Do solemnly swear that I will support and comply with the Constitution of the United States of America.
The Constitution and the laws of the state of Wisconsin.
The Constitution and the laws of the state of Wisconsin.
The charter laws and ordinances of the village of Heartland.
The charter, laws, and ordinances of the village of Heartland.
The rules and regulations of the Heartland Police Department.
The rules and regulations of the Heartland Police Department.
And the law enforcement code of ethics.
And the law enforcement code of ethics.
And that I will faithfully and impartially discharge the duties of my office as police officer to the best of my ability.
And that I will help faithfully and impartially discharge the duties of my office as police officer to the best of my ability.
So help me, God.
So help me, God.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. I'd like to welcome Zach Bell to the Heartland Police Department. Zach joins us with over four years of law enforcement experience from the Waukesha County Sheriff's Office, and he's already started his road training program. Zach, any family you want to introduce here tonight?
I've got my dad, my stepmom, my mom, and my stepdad. I've got my brother, his girlfriend, my cousin, and my uncle, and then my wonderful girlfriend, Carly.
All right. And Carly, if you'll do the honors, I'll pin Zach's badge.
Take your time.
Oh.
All the time.
I do it at work, too.
Oh, okay.
All right, so she's not mad at you. You didn't get the badge in the chest.
No, no.
Congratulations again. And if anyone's willing to join us, get the Noah Officer ballot, some of the other officers with the Heartland Police Department will be just in the meeting room having some lighter fresh ones. After the meeting or during the meeting, you're more than welcome to join us.
And the floor is Officer Bell's if you'd like to speak to the body.
I just want to thank everyone for that opportunity to serve the village of Heartland. Thank you very much.
Okay, at this time. Oh yeah, we'll let you guys go. At this time, we will have public comments. This is for any item anybody wants to speak on. If you want to step towards the microphone, obviously if there's more than one, just go one after the other. If you're going to be a lot more than three minutes, let us know so that we can grant you that time.
I will try to be concise. My name is Val Wiesniewski. I live at 511 Rensen Road. I just have a couple of comments to a couple of agenda items. Number one, I saw on the agenda tonight that you guys are actually discussing the handicap parking discussion, and I just wanted to say thank you for actually having that discussion regardless of how it turns out. So I just wanted to say thank you because it made me feel like our community voices are being heard. I also saw that you're looking at the special event permit. I did notice in the board packet that the Arrowhead Parade is happening. And at first, I was kind of curious, like, okay, I know in recent events, there was a requirement for signatures. And at first, I was kind of curious, like, why does the parade not require that? Did some digging, found out like in the ordinance that in section 7857, that indeed parades are exempt. But then I kind of cross-referenced it to the ordinance that you guys are currently looking at, which seems like a combination of ordinances, and I just wanted to make, you guys might be aware of this already, that that parade exception is not in the ordinance that you're looking at tonight. So I didn't know if that was something that you're aware of. Lastly, I wanted to speak to the vacant seat that you guys are voting on tonight. I know at least three residents have expressed interest. It's been mentioned that historically, for the past 50 years, the board president brings forward one nomination for the board to consider. Having said that, that has only happened once in the past 50 years. Every member of this board is allowed one equal vote regardless of your position. But when you're only allowed to vote on one of the three potential candidates, it seems to me your votes aren't quite as equal. I'm asking that the board do one of two things. Either hear from all three candidates and vote on the three candidates that are interested, or have a special election and let the community decide who is to fill that vacancy. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else that wants to speak in public comments?
Anne Charlesworth, 613 Rensen Road, Heartland. To explain the purpose of my public comment this evening, I'm going to begin with a quote from George Bush's speech commemorating the 20th anniversary of 9/11. "We have seen growing evidence that the dangers to our country can come not only across borders, but from violence that gathers within. There is little cultural overlap between violent extremists abroad and violent extremists at home. But in their disdain for pluralism, in their disregard for life, in their determination to defile national symbols, they are children of the same foul spirit, and it is our continuing duty to confront them. Although I heard these words after I publicly confronted seeing a symbol representing the foul spirit of racism in our community, that was the purpose of my post. It's not enough to just not be racist. As elected officials, we need to be anti-racist. I am not nearly as eloquent a writer or speaker as our former president. But if you look past the hate and vitriol on the thread of my post, you will see some thoughtful, uncomfortable conversations about racism. And that's why I am here tonight. I ask that you consider the goal for this community to be a thriving, inclusive community that values every individual. One suggestion I have toward that goal is that you consider starting with including citizens from diverse backgrounds when appointing board and committee members. If you decide to take on the goal of creating a more inclusive community and form a committee to study approaches to that end, I would be happy to serve."
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else that wants to speak?
Anne Greven camp, 618 Rensen Road, lifelong resident of Heartland. On July 21st, I emailed the village president and the interim village administrator, and I expressed my interest in filling what I knew would be an upcoming vacancy on this board when the trustee was going to resign. I received an email back from our village president that said if someone resigns from their position, I will set up a time to talk about the position and the process for a replacement. On August 16th, trustee Anson resigned. On August 25th, the Waukesha Freeman wrote an article and had an article in the paper. It talked about trustee Anson's resignation. In the last paragraph of that article, it says, and I quote, "Once that person is nominated, the village board will be tasked with giving their appointment an up or down vote," Fanner Steele said. He is checking with the village attorney, however, he said, "to make sure that that's still the proper process." On September 3rd, I received a phone call telling me that I was not selected. I, the past week, I then looked into the state statutes. I looked into municipal codes because I wanted to understand. I wanted to know where this actually says, "This is the process that you select people." I want to know what the process is. I really do. So I looked at all of that. I couldn't find it anywhere. I couldn't specifically say that the process was that we just have one person select somebody, especially when there are multiple people that express interest in maybe filling this seat. So I did reach out again to President Fanner Steele and to the interim village administrator, Ryan Bailey, on email. The response back that I got was I did get a municipal code which doesn't say, or it doesn't, and it does not, it does and does not say that what this process is was okay. All right, it's very vague. But I think more importantly, what I was told was that there is, that this was a process that has been the best practice for the last 50 years that the board has used. So I did respond back and ask, when has this process been used in the last 50 years? Because I think that's the responsible thing to ask. When has, when have people in our residents in our community expressed interest to fill a vacancy for a trustee position on the board, and we have used the best practice of arbitrarily picking somebody to fill that position? I was told once by Dick Landwehr in 1985. So here's my, here's why I'm here. I'm not here because I have hurt feelings. I don't. I don't have hurt feelings that I wasn't selected. But what I really question is this process. Is this process the best practice that you all could use? I will say that as a person that sat out here, sat over there since April, I've missed maybe one meeting. And I hear the word transparency thrown around a lot in these meetings. And I'm here to tell you, this process was not, is not, and never will be transparent. This is not open government. And as a person that's been personally involved now, I have to tell you that this sows doubt in all the decisions that you've made and will make in the future.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else that wants to speak in public comments?
Hi, Lisa Arenas, 423 Rensen Road. I have been front and center to the St. Charles construction, working from home, having my house rattle, the whole nine yards. While I understand the need for the expansion of the church and the parking lot, there were a lot of trees taken down along the side of the highway to make room for a road that is now not going to be there. In addition to that, the retention pond has been expanded. It was seeded and redug out again this week because it wasn't up to code, I guess. With that, I'm just hopeful that whatever goes into kind of the rebuilding of kind of the flora in that area, that there'd be trees included. And I don't know if that's St. Charles property or not. I've heard conflicting pieces that St. Charles removed a bunch of trees that wasn't theirs to remove. But the sound is now pretty fun, as most of these Rensen Road people are aware of, that 16 is really loud. So it's maybe not a super high priority, but landscapers have been there, and there hasn't been anything happening. So just something to consider if it's considered village property. Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks. Anybody else that would want to speak in public comments? Sir?
Troy Ledke, 508 Merton Ave. I'm just here to give a shout out to the DPW for the work they did on Centennial. I coached baseball, and my last year, we got to play on Centennial, and it was a gorgeous field. And I had eight other teams that we played against. They was an immaculate field, so thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else that would like to speak in public comments? Okay. Thank you to everybody that spoke in public comments. Now, we have the, we have a consideration of a motion to approve village board minutes from the August 23rd meeting.
I'll second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the minutes from the August 23rd meeting. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? That motion is carried. The next item we have on the agenda is consideration of a motion to approve the vouchers for payments in the amount of $679,873.74.
Dave Baudner.
Just real quick, that is a change from what was posted.
Wow, you shut it down.
We had a, an error in the report that we ran. It's actually, so it's almost $20,000, $18,000 less. So just want everyone here to be aware since we don't really have that up.
On your voucher list, you'll see a payment of $44,175.17. That is a payment to Mustang Construction. That is to close out the 2020 utility project on Sunny Slope.
Thank you.
I'd like to make a motion that we approve the checks, wires, and credit cards for $679,873.74.
I'll second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve those vouchers. Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? That motion is carried. Now, we have considerations of actions related to licenses and permits. We have, getting there. Bartender's operators licenses for Hannah Carney and Kristen Cook.
I'll make the motion to approve the two.
Bartender's license, Ezra.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve those bartenders licenses. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? That motion is carried. The next thing we have is a street use permit. This is Arrowhead High School Student Senate Homecoming Parade on Friday, October 1st, 2021. Lineup at 4:00 PM. Parade 4:30 to 5:30 PM.
A move that we approve. The street permit.
I'll second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the Arrowhead High School Student Senate Homecoming Parade. Discussion.
I have a question.
You gotta let the motion maker in the second.
I'm sorry.
Do you have anything, Mike? Do you have anything?
I do. Do you have something?
Motion maker, okay. You'll go next.
Okay, just a couple of quick questions. I see that the, during the hours of closure time, it says lineup at 4:00. Is the lineup also on East Capitol Drive? Yes. Oh, hi.
I'm here. I'm Tamara Lindmeyer.
Can you say that one more time just to make sure?
Tamara Lindmeyer. I do not live in Heartland, but I'm here. I'm the student senate advisor at Arrowhead High School. So lineup is on Church Street. So they line up there at 4:00, and then the parade will start at 4:30, goes down Church, turns on Capitol, and then onto County Road E and ends at Arrowhead. So it will be done well before 5:30 even. So.
So thank you for coming and speaking. So a couple more questions in response to that. So you guys are aware that Heartland North gets out at 3:45, correct? And that buses do depart at that time?
That's never been an issue. Did their time change?
Yeah, it's, I looked it up on the website today, so you may want to clarify with Heartland North. Buses do depart at 3:45, which is right over there. So we know that that's a very concentrated area for student pickup. So obviously, I'm sure you can understand my concern with just the little ones and.
Oh, absolutely. It's always been that time. So maybe buses have changed because we never had an issue with that in the past. So we can always look to move it back a little bit, the lineup time.
I know that what we ran into a couple of years, you're right, where we asked them to just, they held on until that at 4:00.
I was just gonna say.
Because the buses are clear by then.
So we'll tell groups they cannot arrive before.
Okay, is that good if we communicate that? You all just know that at 3:45, those buses.
Thank you.
We talked about it a couple of years ago.
No, thank you.
That was just.
Thank you for pointing that out. So I will emphasize, do not show up before 4:00.
And then, and so where would the, so just out of curiosity, just because I'm curious. So if you're attending the parade, you're in the parade, you have to leave a vehicle. Where will vehicles be left to be in the parade?
We encourage people who are participating in the parade to park at Arrowhead.
Okay.
And unless they're hauling, you know, a flatbed or something, that they don't park around that area, that they actually walk to the starting line to participate from there.
Okay.
So, yeah, thank you. I yield.
I, easy question, just does street name and block numbers attach map and diagram? I did not receive it. Did you hand one in with your application?
I didn't turn in the application. I'm just here on behalf of.
Did I miss it? Do you guys have, does anybody else have it?
There is a parade route that we have from the past. It's the same one. I can always, if you give me an email, I can send it over.
No, I just was curious because it says it should be on here, and usually there's, people put a drawing or something, and I was just curious if I missed it.
We absolutely have one, so I'm happy to send that.
Can you send it to the clerk? She'll send it to whoever you sent the application to and request it be sent.
Thank you very much. That's all I had.
Yeah, no, it's not a problem. Anything else?
And then maybe just put on there if the time gets moved to not before 4:00 or whatever.
Yeah, no, I will make sure that we communicate to all of our participants to not line up before 4:00. Anything else?
Anybody else? Good.
All right, thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Thank you. We do have a motion second. If no one has anything else, I'll call the question. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? That motion is carried. The next item we have is an application for a fireworks permit. Do you want the agenda?
The feed isn't working. I just was told, someone's trying to watch the meeting and the feed's not working. That's what I wanted to say.
Well, I don't, we have a feed.
I believe you posted that meeting, correct?
No, no.
We are making a recording. We will post fireworks. Appears the libraries have an internet.
Okay, thank you. That's all. I'm sorry.
No, that's, thank you for telling us. Yeah, we're getting there. Once that boardroom's done, we'll be, if that's broken, then we'll. We got an application for fireworks permit for Lake Country Lutheran High School. This is for their homecoming, October 1st, 2021.
I'll make a motion to approve the fireworks application for Lake Country Lutheran High School for the homecoming on October 1st, 2021.
I'll second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve that fireworks permit. Any discussion?
I have just one question. It's just.
Do you want to hear from Fire?
Oh, sure. Hi.
I'm Catherine Begatens. I'm the principal at Lake Country Lutheran. So I'm here on behalf of the permit.
Nice to meet you. Thank you. President, my question is actually for the fire department.
Oh, okay, sorry.
No, that's okay.
Sorry. Do we have anybody from Fire here? I think we have a chief here.
We do not. They have a business meeting, so.
I'm leaving in two minutes for that business meeting, so hopefully I can help.
Can you come in?
I just, I just didn't know if there was a protocol when someone, I just don't know. It's just pure ignorance on my part. Is there a protocol of some sort when there is a fire, like a firework permit?
Go by the microphone.
PD or Fire get involved? They go look at, survey the area? I don't know.
Usually we don't.
Okay. That was my only question.
We've done them at Nixon Park for many years, so usually we don't. It's a professional display.
It's Wolverine fireworks.
Yeah, so usually that's up to them to handle.
Wolverine, yeah. That was all. I just didn't know for myself, just for.
Did you have something for me, too?
Thank you.
Thank you. That was my only question.
Anybody else with any questions?
Is the fire department actually present, or anybody there going to be present? I don't, I'm sorry. I thought you were leaving. I was going to ask her.
We're not always present. Sometimes we are, sometimes we're not. We do our best to be, knowing that there's fireworks display, but we're not always there. Generally, for the homecoming ones, we're up there anyway with an ambulance for the homecoming games anyway. So I'm assuming it's going to be part of the homecoming game. So usually, we're up there with an ambulance at least anyway.
Okay. All right, sorry.
We usually have paramedics.
Okay, thank you.
Yep. Good.
Any other questions or anything that anybody wants to discuss?
Leave on there.
Wait until he sits down.
After this one, call the boss.
Got it. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. I hope it's wonderful.
Thanks.
The next item we have on the agenda, we have a first reading of an ordinance repealing 10-206 through 10-232 of the Village of Heartland Code of Ordinances Regulating Public Dances and Concerts.
So a little background, we have been talking about this for a couple of months about collaborating everything. We've taken all of your comments. We've taken them back to our attorney. Kind of from what I heard in the audience, I think I will take to them as well in regard to parades and as far as having them look at possibly tying that into this ordinance as well. Not sure if anybody has a question, but obviously the petition isn't a consent. It's that they received notification that was discussed. So, and then at the village board's discretion, we can have a public hearing or some kind of public publication, whatever the village board would want. So again, this is reading one, so if anybody has issues, please let us know or concerns.
Anybody?
Are the fees changing?
No, no, we're not changing anything with the fees.
Fees are the same.
I don't think so.
All right, thank you.
And that's that first reading. Unless anybody have anything else on that one? Nothing? Okay. Next item, we have first reading of an ordinance amending 78-56 through 78-62 of the Village of Heartland Code of Ordinances Regulating Street Use Permits.
So again, we're just kind of changing this language. This would just be for neighborhood block parties. This would not be, obviously, this is different than special events. So just trying to clean up the language on this as well.
Anybody have anything else on that one? The next item we have is consideration. The next item we have is consideration of a motion to adopt on third reading, an ordinance amending 82-4 of the Village of Heartland Code of Ordinances regulating parking limitations. Since this is a consideration of a motion to adopt, this is the, on the third reading, do you want to touch on?
Mr. Chief?
I'm doing really bad with names today.
Good evening, Chief of Police, Torren Misco, Heartland Police Department. And this is our third reading for the parking limitations for curbside pickup. I know Trustee Walsh Leger had a question in regards to if there's another sign up, which one supersedes which. So we did put some clarifying language under number one. The very last sentence there, it says a reserved pickup parking sign supersedes all other posted parking regulations except handicap parking spot designations. So just to clarify that. Other than that, it's been, it's the same ordinance as you've seen for the prior two readings, and I believe it encompasses what the board was looking for on the curbside pickup limitations.
In case anybody has, does anybody have any questions or anything to chief while he's there? No.
Thank you.
I'll make a motion that we approve 82-4 for the ordinance of regulating parking limitations.
It's been moved and seconded to adopt 82-4 of the Village of Heartland Code of Ordinances regulating parking limitations. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? That is carried. The next item we have on the agenda is consideration of a motion to approve resolution number 913-2021. There's an extra zero on here, but I think that that's unintentional, so I'm gonna say 913-2021. A resolution pledging that the village board of the Village of Heartland will expend funds necessary for the Heartland Public Library to exempt the village from the Waukesha County Library levy, and our library director will, will give the explanation on that as she does each September.
This is just a reminder that because you will support the library greater than the minimum appropriation, then village residents won't be doubly taxed for their library services. Any questions?
Can I clarify something?
Yeah.
Just since there are so many people here.
Yep.
So what you just said, and I, as residents, we want to know also. Because we are going to be taxed in our village taxes, the town of Merton or other municipalities, they would be taxed from the county for the county library system, because we will be taxed that much or more that comes out of our village tax, which exempts us from paying the library tax to the county. Is that correct?
Essentially, this is, we have to meet certain standards so that we get the grant money from the county.
Yeah.
It's saying that we are meeting the minimum standards. We did the calculations. Do you have the numbers you remember?
For the total, $363,228.
And I forget what exactly you're.
We're going to look at $407,570.
So by the Heartland Board stating that we will at least match, if not go over the amount required.
Yep.
The county will not withhold the grant money therefore.
Yep.
This is really a good program, because you know, with the amount of people that use our facility, our beautiful library here. We fund it. This way, the money is, you know, gathered from the area of communities. And how far does it go now, this whole, you get books from Jefferson and?
All of Waukesha and Jefferson County.
All Waukesha County, which is a great sharing and.
Is Racine in it now, I thought?
No.
Just Waukesha and Jefferson, apparently. She said that.
Thought Racine was as well.
And anybody from the towns around? We want them to come and use our library and take the books somewhere in the touchless system. Right?
Correct.
Thank you very much. Any questions for our director?
I'll make a motion to approve the resolution number 09132021.
It's been moved and seconded to approve 09132021, the resolution for the library. You made the motion, Trustee Lutke, and you are on the library board. Did you have anything you wanted to add on this?
No, thank you. I'm good at this time. Thank you.
Anybody else? If there's no other discussion, I'll call the question. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? That motion is carried. The next item we have on the agenda is consideration of a motion to approve a contract for the Bark River Field Reconstruction.
DPW. The DPW requests proposals for reconstruction of the Bark River Baseball Park, which is classified as HA. We sent it out to four different companies. Two responded, in which time, we were ready to award this a couple of months ago to a certain company that's brought in a lower proposal. That company sends closed its doors. They couldn't find personnel help. So we are gonna award it to the, the only other qualifying bid, and that bid is for Midwest Athletic Fields Incorporated for the sum of $16,630.00. That is still under the budget. Both of them came in under the budget. The budget was $25,000.
And it will still be done this fall?
It'll be done in October.
And can you give an explanation on the other fields? Where are we at with things? I think we have one, or we have two more to go?
We have one field to go. That is Penbrook. During the budget process, I'll explain to you, we're actually not gonna do that in '22. We pushed that back because of playground equipment to 2023.
Okay. But I just want to throw it off for this whole board and for DPW coming up with that reconstruction program. I think it's meant a lot to this community, and I think people really like it. And I really mean that. There used to not be a system in place, and now with that system being in place, I think it's fantastic that we're nearing full cycle. Have gotten through all of them. It just, I think people really, really appreciate it. So good job and kudos to, I mean, this board and everyone that was involved in that.
You said it was the second bid, but they fell through, but was, you know, the bid was, I mean, was it comparable?
The bid was $15,800.
But they fell apart.
Right. Okay. So it's in line.
I have a question for you, Mr. Faulkner.
Yes.
I noticed on the proposal that was sent to us, that note that says the customer must provide a place on site for the disposal. And I know that the Bark River Park has the two large dumpsters. Is that normal? That we have to pay for that, that the customer itself pays for the dumpsters?
We just need to allow a place for them to put it.
Put the dumpster, okay.
Right. They can't use our.
So they're not gonna use our dumpster then?
No, so that, that's talking about the spoils that they take out of the field.
That's why I was wondering.
Yes. So what we do is we reuse it. So we'll reuse it on, for like berms.
Around the.
So we'll use it in the parks and throughout the village.
You just got to my next question. Thank you. Brilliant. I yield.
Anybody else?
I'll make a motion to award the contract for Bark River Field Reconstruction to Midwest Athletic Fields.
It's been moved and seconded to award that contract to Midwest Athletic Fields, as requested by our DPW director, Mr. Faulkner. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? That motion is carried. The next item we have is discussion related to handicap parking stalls in the downtown area.
So, at a past board meeting, a member of the community brought to the village board's attention that they didn't feel there was enough handicap stalls throughout the downtown area. I think the reference was basically on the main streets. So I had Ruker Demelki do a GIS overview of the Village of Heartland from the village hall out North Avenue to Business Limits, and then from East Capitol down here at Quick Trip to Sitco. And in that area, there is nine public parking stalls and 13 private handicap stalls, one of them being on the road. So the tough area is for road ADA stalls is they have to be a minimum of eight feet wide, and then they have to have access of five feet from the curb towards the businesses. That is for, that is for wheelchair ramps. So in that, the ADA says that in that five-foot area and that handicap stall area, there cannot be any signs, tables, flower pots, anything in, on the sidewalk in that area. So we just have to make that clear if we're considering going ahead with this. So what the DPW is doing is looking for direction from the village board. If you want to add a handicap or ADA stall, I would suggest that probably not putting it in front of a business that already has a private one, maybe spread it out a little bit. So if somebody's visiting that business, we'd hate to use, see them use a public one when they can use a private one at that location. So we are looking for some direction.
Was there any recommendation from them, from this geographical area, number, are we, these 22, are we in line with?
So there is no, there is no rule on streetside parking. The rule is that if you're a public parking lot, or any parking lot, has to have 1% of their stalls has to be ADA.
Any parking lot.
Any parking lot.
Or any parking lot.
I have a question. Capital Drive has none on the street, as I'm looking here.
That is correct.
Do, is there anywhere that you're aware of that actually would be a good, I mean, that this, these dimensions would work? I mean, we've got a lot of signs down there. Some of them, maybe we could move, or?
So the one area that you'd want to access, right, is probably the, the local restaurants, because that's, that's a hotspot. And if, if that being said, if you look, there is ADA spots at that community parking.
Right.
Lot that we just built last year, and that is wheelchair accessible on that ramp, that bridge that we put over the river. Other than that, I don't know if that would even work there, because they do have planters, and there's a lot of signs there and tables on the sidewalk.
Yeah, there are.
Didn't you say, doesn't it work out with the ramp parking the way that they are now without the spots? It's, it meets, it doesn't meet the requirements that create a parking stall, but just the height and everything happens to work out, or?
The height does work out if we want to put a stall there, because our, all of our parking spots downtown are eight feet wide. So they measure it from the, the face of the curb out eight feet, and that's where we do end our parking stalls.
So just to clarify, those nine public stalls that you, that you mentioned.
Correct.
Four of those, though, are, are municipal operating buildings. So it looks to be that there are two behind me here, and there are two here in front of the library. But the one that's in front of the municipal building is just right out front, the front doors.
That is correct.
The other than public stalls are down North Avenue, behind those shops in that down.
Senior Thomas.
In that parking structure area.
Correct.
So those individuals still need to use the bridge system, the tunnel, to come over.
That is correct.
Yeah.
But on Capitol, with the park, the ramp that comes down, is that, if that ramp comes down on the sidewalk, that kind of limits where, where that can go, doesn't it?
That does. That's, that's why they're, if you ask us to proceed, there will be a lot of legwork. So we'll have to go out and measure. So you need the five feet, right? Five feet from the back of curb. In a lot of them locations, that's tough.
I wanted to ask a question. Did you go talk, did anybody talk to any of the businesses saying, do you want a handicap spot in front of your business? The reason that I'm asking that is I, I'd be eager to hear what those business owners say, because I think one thing that's important here also, and why I think handicap parking is very, very, very important, which is why the law dictates, when you have a private, or even a parking lot, you have to put it in. But they don't on the streets, because when you dedicate it as handicap parking, you will use it for nothing else. If a truck is coming to deliver goods to a restaurant or anywhere, they do not have the right to park there for even five minutes and unload. If people are coming for a parade or anything else, I mean, a parade is shutting it down, but I think we need to ask, because the next problem we may run into, what business do you put it in front of? That says, I want to only use my spot 15% of the time. Otherwise, have it empty. I just, I think we have to think about that.
There lies my recommendation.
Well.
Our recommendation.
I will say, though, as somebody who now has to, if I take my mother anywhere, it's in a wheelchair. And for me to push her from this back parking lot up to Capitol Drive, let's say we were gonna go to one of the restaurants there or a store, wherever, I would not be able to do that. I can tell you right now, I'm not strong enough to push her that far and then up the hill.
Why would you park in the handicap?
Pardon?
If you were pushing her, why would you park in the handicap?
Because she's handicapped. I have to put her in a wheelchair.
Okay. I'm saying, but if you, like, if I'm pushing someone, I can push in a regular spot. I always thought handicap was more so like if they're on their own.
It accommodates a handicap wheelchair.
Oh, okay.
So I'm just saying, I'm just saying, you know, because that's uphill. I could not push her uphill. I cannot push, I'm not gonna say how much weight, but just at the hospital, I had a hard time. So I, I don't want.
Whose business would you put it in front of?
Well, that's just that, I don't know who you would ding, but I will say that, I know that's probably bad adjective, but, or adverb, but I will say that the bank on the corner has a parking lot. And if, could we maybe put it, like, at that end stall there? Because they've got room that, there's nothing, I don't think there's any flower pots out there. I don't know. I just.
You, you could. I'm saying, but I don't know what the bank is going to say about that.
But again, I think we should have something for these people, because, like I said, I can't take her unless I can get her in a wheelchair and get her moved.
Just out of curiosity to the bank comment, just, just clarifying, because it just, I'm confused now, so I apologize. So if we were talking about the bank, let's just say, we're just talking, we're just talking.
I just pick that out of the sky.
Yep, picking that out of the sky. It's a good example. Technically, those spots in front of the bank, though, are village spots. They're not the bank spots.
Correct.
So what we would choose to do with that road would be on the village.
Yes.
Okay, okay, just checking. Okay.
Correct.
Oh, I got confused.
Oh, no, oh, yeah, no, no, I'm saying, though, I have a feeling.
Any spot on there is village.
Yes, I was simply saying that I think that, you know.
I mean, clearly, out of consideration, we would, yes, absolutely.
That's what I meant. But yes, it is, they have no say in it, like we, I mean, that's not the us to this, or the village, when I say us, I mean, the body.
Well, people don't realize until they're actually in that situation how difficult it is. And I know trying to get my father, when he was in a wheelchair and using a walker, trying to get him into Palmer's, you know, it took four men to get him in there. It, it really does become, you know, can we get in before we leave, you know, how bad do you want to go? Do the, how do we get into the door? Is there a ramp? Is there this? So I, I personally, I would like to see something more accessible than the back parking lot, that you have to go up a hill.
To go where?
Well, to the main street. What if you want, I mean, if you want to go to any of the restaurants up here, or if you wanted to go to the resale truck.
Make all of this handicap. That was my suggestion, right on the side road. Then no trucks.
That's fine. I don't care. That's fine.
Could we do handicap spot on Park by Capitol? The reason I ask that.
It's right in the middle.
And you're right by the crosswalk.
Do you know, is that Mark?
Well, that's, yeah.
What road is it that?
Hate's Cross.
When you take a left just before you get to Palmer's coming east, and then you take a left, and that takes you down towards the Leesian. Goodwin here?
Goodwin.
No, that Goodwin's this one, isn't it?
No.
That's Goodwin?
Goodwin's Covenant.
Okay, Goodwin, yep. Could we put those spots there, because there's no planters?
So, so there's no parking from East Capitol to Hate Street?
Yes.
Right now, there is. Could, could we?
There's not enough width.
Oh, there's not, okay.
The road's not wide enough.
I was just saying.
Sorry. Just, just for clarification, Bertrand Banyan, you have a spot. Can you speak, just really quickly? Bertrand Banyan, I just want to double check, because I'm gonna call you out, Jesse. Yeah, you, you do have a handicap spot in the back, correct?
Correct.
Okay, so we need to add that. Can you get that added to the map? Thank you.
Since she has one in the front, I'm guessing she doesn't want one.
But I'm just saying.
One in the front.
But thank you. Yeah, just so we can get that added, Dave. Thank you.
That's just, Capitol's, you know, ideal spot for, I mean, less, less work, but my gosh, unless we tear down some buildings or, you know, make, it scares me, how are you gonna open up to the sidewalk when people are in this community, walking and riding bikes and different things? I mean, it's like.
So you're, well, you're also limited.
So half of the south side of East Capitol has grass terrace. So I don't know how that's gonna work. A grass terrace between the sidewalk and the curb.
I think it's a great idea to put it in. I just think it gets really tough.
Where?
Deciding on, I mean, you take any of the businesses.
That's what we're looking for, some direction. We'll go door knock, and you just.
We could all make some calls. I don't want to put too much on you. I think that we have to ask, though, because I think we're gonna just run into another situation where you're gonna have a business saying, no, put it over there, but close enough that they can use it, but where does that fairness lie?
You're gonna want it near a crosswalk, I guess. So it would have to be by the Manueline Hall, Palmer's, or.
Or in front of the bank.
So maybe we go talk to them.
And I'm not, I don't want to single out a business, but Keller Williams does have a lot of sidewalk. And I don't want to single them out, because I.
Why don't we go talk?
It's up there, all the parking.
We should get some input from the businesses. You know, if the businesses want to work with it to maybe take a couple of tables out of the front of their building or something. tables out of the, front of their building or something.
I agree, I agree that parking should be added on East Capital, not necessarily North Avenue or Cottonwood. I mean, the majority of your business is on East Capital.
It looks pretty much except for Palmer's and Zesties.
And the resale shop, there is handicap parking.
Mm-hmm.
Behind everywhere.
Yep. Almost all the other businesses are covered.
But those are private, like, are, is the public allowed to park back there?
No, no, she's saying just parking spots, period.
Oh, I see.
You're talking about parking way over here, but you're only talking about getting the two businesses. All the other ones, if you're going to their businesses, you can park in their parking lot. If you're going to the Tom Brass Building, you can park in the handicap. If you go to the next building over, and the next, and the next, and the next, you can park in handicap.
Typically, that handicap spot, too, that's where the gas station is right now, is.
Correct.
Obviously, so that one comes down.
Yep. Rick, you do have a handicap spot in back. There's a handicap spot on that. I mean, it's tough to get up the stairs, but it's there.
Right.
Yeah, it's weird, because it, yeah.
But it does count per state law. That, I think the state law knows it's tough to create.
There is one behind the pharmacy?
Yep.
So, we need to get that one added as well. It's not on the map. Which is strange, because there's, like, stairs on either side, so.
No, I mean, you definitely, a handicap, some people can park, and then they get out with a cane and walk.
That's true.
So, there's different levels of handicap.
We could try, it sounds like we have to gather more info. I mean, just throwing it out there.
I, I would, I think the discussion is good. I think we just need to get the map updated, number one, have them re-double check, because we found two thus far. Talk to some of the businesses, and then we need to relook at it.
Jesse? Sorry, Ms. Prozak? I'm going to ask that you come up, I have to ask a question. I'm going to ask you to put your bid hat on.
Sure.
And your business hat, but your bid hat, could you be an assistant, since you guys have meetings coming up?
Yeah.
With getting the word out to businesses? So that we kind of, we just want to get a feeler. If there's all of a sudden a business that, "Yeah, I want to have one in front of mine," that makes it much easier on us than, let's say, all of a sudden, we decided we were putting one in front of, just using you, in front of Birch and Banyan, where you're like, "Whoa, I have one in back."
Yeah.
You don't need to take away where my people are picking up their stuff.
Yep, we have our boardman in the morning.
But that way, we can start to get some more info, if there is someone, and we can, if you could.
Yep, absolutely, I'll bring that up in the morning.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
Thanks, Jesse.
Um, I think that, I think it'd be best that we, I'm going to just say postpone to a definite date, postpone to the next Village Board meeting, if that's okay with everybody.
We're seeking more information.
Huh? Yes, yep, yep. So, we just postpone that, that automatically goes on the agenda for next, next meeting.
Good discussion.
Thank you, sir.
Thanks, Dave.
Um, the next item we have on the agenda is to, sorry, consideration of a motion to approve an extension of the Merton Fire Ambulance Contract that they requested.
So, they approached me in, at the end of August, looking to see if they could get a one-month extension. To the deadline, their contract has an annual renewal. If they don't, uh, let us know they want out by September 1st, that automatically renews. They are looking at all of their options. So, we have granted them an extension until tomorrow, and they would like to see if the Village Board would grant them an extension until October 1st, so that they can figure out what direction and what they're doing. They haven't said they want out, they just, uh, said they wanted a little bit more time to discuss some of their options. So.
So.
We just need a motion from the board to extend the deadline until October 1st, if they don't want to. If they want out, they would be able to get out.
We need to extend it for the two weeks.
I mean, was there any feedback then? They just said it wasn't enough time? I mean, they took the two weeks, but.
Ryan had asked me, and I said, "I felt it's best for the board." I said, "He could make the decision for the two weeks, but we have to get that for the board." I didn't want to make that decision.
Was there any feedback then?
From that two-week extension?
No.
No, so they, I mean, they approached me at, at the end of August, there's no way, it was already after our last board meeting.
Right.
I didn't want them to say, "Hey, we want out," you know, before they, I want them to think about it. I want to be a good neighbor, and, you know, we'll support whatever decision they decide.
I think I can clarify. Rick, I think you're thinking that there's been constant communication, where I think what Ryan told them was, "You can have the extension, but I have to run it by my board, and if the board votes against it, I'll be letting you know on Tuesday morning." So, it's not like they've been calling, saying, "Hey, we got it all worked out." Just, to their understanding, it's, unless they hear different, and it's extended till October 1st. Where if we did, but that doesn't mean we have to.
Right.
Vote for it tonight. Keep setting the decision.
I'll make a motion to approve an extension for the Merton Fire Ambulance Contract to October 1st, 2021.
Right?
Hold you a second, a minute?
Yeah.
It's been moved and seconded to extend that Merton Fire Ambulance Contract deadline discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all opposed? Uh, that motion is carried. The next item we have on the agenda is a, a consideration of a nomination for an appointment to fill a Village Trustee seat. The nomination is Adam Pfeifer to provide comments to the public and to this board. There was a lot of questions that were asked. The state law does provide guidelines on this process. Guidelines work almost kind of like, just as an example, kind of like a speed limit. You can go 55 in a, you can go 55 in a 65, that's not illegal. Uh, you can go up to 65, you can't go over. So, they do provide lim, uh, certain guidelines of, as long as you're within these boundaries, you can do those things. And then, um, other than that, it's, it's, it's up to that, that community, that body in deciding. Uh, we did not have anything written in our policy specifically, which probably is a good idea for us to write into our ordinances. Um, the historical practice was, I do believe that we have a trustee on the board that was appointed at one point. Before that, I know that David Lammerrand was appointed, Randy Swenson, Jack Wenstrom, Dick Landwehr, when he originally came onto the board, he was appointed. To clarify on, on some of the comments today, the last time that I knew that multiple people were interested, I just ran it by Dick Landwehr, and he stated that, I mean, that was one time where he didn't appoint Dave Lammerrand, he appointed somebody else, and then that happened later. So, uh, it has been the practice, it's as far back as anyone can remember, including Mr. Landwehr. Uh, that's the only way that the Village did it. That's also how they do it in first, second, third, and fourth-class cities, um, and each one of our committees. We had known this appointment was coming for a long time. If the Village Board, this body wants to change that process, they can, but since 1892, every single time, this has come up. To the best of my recollection, and anybody else that was on the board, including Dick, which goes all the way back to the 60s, that's how it's been done, so that's why I chose it. I felt that if I were to change it, based on the calls I was getting, saying, "How does this work?", that that would actually be more confusing than if I didn't, not to mention, obviously, being in the position I'm in, I'm kind of partial to saying, "Okay, I like it the way it is." But with that being said, uh, the gentleman that's being, uh, that I'm nominating is here, but I will leave it up to the body on if they would like him to come forward or not. Adam Pfeifer is in house. I don't know if the board is going to have questions for you, uh, but if they do, at least you're showing that you're present.
Hi, everybody.
Hello.
Good evening.
Does anybody have any questions for Mr. Pfeifer?
Can you just tell us in the public a little bit about yourself, then, Adam?
Sure. I'm Gary, to Amanda Pfeifer. We have four kids. Um, I'm a longtime, lifelong Lake Country resident. I grew up in Stone Bank. We bought a house in Heartland here, actually where my mom was raised, on the corner of East Capital and Merton Avenue. And, uh, we've lived there since 2016, and we plan on staying in that home for quite some time, and, uh, raising our family in this village. I'm a hockey coach, I'm on the Arrowhead Youth Hockey Board. I've been serving on that board for three years, and I've gone through some pretty exciting times in the last three or four months. And it was, uh, it was kind of an eye-opening experience and a good opportunity for me to get a good feel for how to work through some pretty difficult times. And I'm really looking forward, hopefully, to the opportunity to be sitting up here with you guys and working through some stuff with you.
So, I just want to say, congratulations on being nominated. But I just, my other question would be, is if you have any, if you feel there'll be any constrictions with, uh, timing, like, there's a board meeting tonight, a budget meeting on Wednesday, a budget meeting on Thursday, and, I mean, with your job or anything like that.
It's a very fair question. My job's actually the easiest of all the things I've got going on in life. I've got a pretty flexible work schedule, but, um, I do have four kids in sports, and up until this year, I was planning on coaching, like, I have historically all four of them in some capacity, whether it be a head coach or assistant coach of one of their teams. With what happened with the youth hockey over the summer and the amount of time that was spent solving that problem, I made that decision that it felt like March, like hockey season was ending, and I was like, finally, hockey's over, and hockey hadn't even started yet. So, I'd made the decision with my wife that I'm not going to be coaching hockey this year, and that would have been my biggest time commitment of the year. Um, and then after the season, with the youth hockey restructure after the season is done, I announced to the board that I will be resigning the youth hockey board after the season's done. So, I'm all yours.
Great, thank you.
Well, I guess I could talk to. And I was also appointed. I was picked out, uh, I was on the Chamber Board, President, and Head of Business in town, and they, I guess they didn't have anybody else. So, I was picked up, and I, maybe 20 years ago. I, I have to support the, the idea, not that I was appointed, but, um, the idea that one person's making that decision, rather than all of us bringing up our own friends. We come into a personality conflict about trying to pick all these people out. It's not an election, it's just more or less, "I like you better than I like that," or, I think the President has the authorities, he's in charge of this whole, this group, he says, of, of the vote, and him providing that information of the person he's recommend, he's actually putting himself on the line, as any employer is doing. Uh, I've employed people, I've had to get rid of people, I've been, gotten rid of. Uh, it's not an easy thing on people. The thing that concerns me most about villages, about Heartland, is I always wanted to do a few things. I want to be involved with the community, I want to be built, uh, have a business, and I wanted to have, belong to a church. And I've been able to accomplish that. As I look through my, back to my life, I was a coach. I coached in high school, I coached in college, I played professionally. I had a job, I had multiple states, and people worked on me. I didn't have time. And I'm looking at this week here, we got a meeting to Monday, tomorrow we have a going away party for Jeff, we got a budget meeting on Wednesday, we got a budget meeting on Thursday, and on Friday, we got a fish fry. That's, that's just a personal thing. I, I look at your, you're so darn busy. It bothers me when I come to a meeting, and I, I try to make my missing meetings very seldom, if any, anytime, but I've had people using the, having their voice on the computer screen, trying to tell me what his election, what, or what their ideas are. I want people that can come, I can look in your eyes and say, "Hey, what do you really feel about this? Robin, why didn't you really tell me what you felt?" You know? I can't even imagine looking at her on that view. We need people that are going to be involved, and this is a, you know, it's not a flunky little job. I mean, we're making some decisions, and, um, you know, look at the handicap parking, and, uh, it's, uh, I support, and maybe because I was elected that way, um, I've been elected since then, but, um, I, I, I think the system, the way it's working, unless we want to change it, and change it to something like if there's an election, and if we have two openings, and we have three people running, one doesn't win, that third person should have the option to be, elect, be, if there's somebody that opens up. I mean, they're, like, in some logical way, of somebody that actually did run, that wanted the business. So, I don't know, I guess I'm talking all day in a two-court pail, but the idea is, I think it's, I like this idea, because now we get to vote on when something that Jeff brings in, and if Jeff screws up on that, then we can be on him. I don't know what it would be advantage, I don't want to spend any more money. I'd rather buy stuff from Nixon Park than to have it in an election. And, uh, I mean, there's the good people, I've had, I haven't found any bad people, despite tonight talking about different prejudice and that, I've never, I haven't seen it. To me, we're all Heartland Village people, want to do the best we can. So, I just hope you have time. If you don't have time, uh, that's, that's going to be the thing that is going to bother me most, because, um, everybody on this board has at least one main job, and about three or four other things they got to do, and them kids, and you've got the hardest thing, kids.
I've got a great partner in life.
So, that's just my, I had, I bet I had a talk since I was the last one, the ancient one, probably the last one, well, not the last one, Nick. Thank you.
I'll, I'll kind of.
Agree with, uh, your sentiments. I, I did look into, you know, the cost, and it is very costly to run an election, and being that there's, what, five months, five and a half months before the next election, and to me, fiscally, it doesn't make sense to spend the money, and I agree, um, that, uh, I think you'd be a good candidate, uh, um, yeah, you do have a lot going on, but you've already kind of explained that you're going to be giving up some of those. I have a lot going on, um, as well, we all do, so, um, we take that consideration, but it's always nice to have somebody that finds the little time that they have left to give back to the community. I think that's, that's an important part, and that means a lot to me.
I don't have anything for Adam. I had an opportunity to speak with Adam, um, already this week, so, thank you for that. Congratulations, I had some questions for the President, so, we were done with this process. ready for that.
Thank you guys.
Thank you.
Yeah, yeah. Thank you.
Just a question, President, because I know the process has been now talked about a couple times, and I thought about when they were speaking. Can you just talk a little bit about, just so that we all know, kind of like what are the qualifying questions that you kind of used and to vet the person that we brought forth for the nomination, just so that we have an insight into that?
One of the only qualifications of someone being a qualified elector is that they're 18 years old and that they live in the district. For me, in this case, because the divide that does seem to be kind of, there's a little bit of a friction in the community, it was getting somebody that's down the middle, that I feel is going to be down the middle. I know with, he might slap me for saying this, I know that there's people, because of the space that they have, other than for local elections, that went while we had a very large presidential election and would not take sides, would not allow those political signs to be put in their yard. That was a huge thing for me because it shows somebody that's down the middle that's going to think on their own regardless of anything and is going to vote on the issues that are best for Heartland. Along with that, I've known Adam for a long time, and I know that other than his children being at the age that they were, that he did want to run for office. And he seems to be an outstanding gentleman to me, and that was the reasons that I picked him. While you're asking the questions, I just do want to throw in, in talking with Mr. Landwehr, this is the first time that this conversation has come up, but it is good that it's coming up so that it can be discussed, so that the public gets their, their take and the board gets their take on how they want things to move forward if they want to change them. But this is the first time in the future for this board, I would say, when we know a resignation's coming for months, let's hit the change before the resignation is in. But that was my reasoning, that was my, every single person, every single person that was interested is outstanding person, that is great for the community, no doubt about it. So it does come down to a judgment call. I could have chosen, I could have chosen Tim Holquist and Greven camp, and every single one of those are going to be a totally qualified elector, and I really mean that, no doubt about it. They're going to be a qualified elector.
Thank you. I yield.
So I definitely would like to see on the agenda the process of getting someone when a seat is empty like this, because I do understand that it's been the process and it's been the past, but I'm going to have to agree with some of the comments that meeting after meeting, we keep saying that we're the new regime and we're doing things differently and we're pushing forward, and we can't suddenly turn back and just say, well, this is how it's always been done, when we, poor Mike Myers, Mr. Myers here is, you know, been called out numerous times for, you know, the old way, and sorry, we don't want to be insulting, but that's the old way. And I think it's important that we can't, we've got a, our actions have to match our words. So I'd just like it to be put on the agenda of how we go about it. And I do also personally, my personal opinion is, an apology to the people that did send out, because I do think the one thing that we needed to do was at least give them the respect to give them a phone call and maybe ask the questions of why they want to run to, for the board. I mean, no call was made to either of them until, except for to say they weren't chosen. So it was never even questioned like why they wanted to. Maybe one would have been a good candidate, not saying Adam is not a good candidate at all, because he's also a very good candidate. But I just think that the questions should be asked.
Okay.
I yield. I like that idea of maybe discussing it at a board meeting, like what is the, you know, just the process and making sure it's still working for us is, and clearly we just went through a couple different ordinances where we're relooking at things as we innovate.
I agree with that 100%. Putting it on the agenda, I will say for the public, I totally disagree with once the resignation comes in, doing this because that process has started when you know it's coming for four months.
But like for future, yeah.
Yeah, but for the future, absolutely, I think that it should be talked about because I did notice, it's not in our ordinances.
Right.
And by getting it in the ordinances, whichever way we choose, definitely clarifies it where if someone goes and looks, they can see exactly what we're doing.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Does Robert's book of rules have guidelines suggested in there for all of this?
No. I mean, it has certain guidelines for running a meeting.
Yes, I know, but I'm just wondering, I didn't look.
That's state law.
No, it's a state statute. Okay.
Yeah.
So what I'll do is instead of putting an ordinance together, on the next agenda, I'll put something forward that you guys can have a discussion point, get us to where we think we can go forward with an ordinance to go through the readings and figure it out from there. That's okay.
Oh, wait a couple seconds for a motion. I don't like to be the one to make the motion, but if no one's going to make it, I'll make it.
I'll make the motion that we have Adam Pfeifer as the chair.
I'll second.
Or trustee.
It's been moved and seconded to, to appoint Adam Pfeifer to the vacant seat on the Heartland Village Board. Discussion?
Effective when?
This will be effective at the next Village, in five days he's going to get sworn in. There'll be a ceremonial swearing in. Darlene is going to let us know as soon as they'll be coming to meetings. But ceremonially, Adam will be sworn in at the next Village Board meeting. I'm sure that this board would allow him to sit on, on any meetings even if he couldn't vote considering if this goes through. So, Adam, meetings start tomorrow, four hours each, on budget.
Wednesday.
Wednesday, sorry.
They're all public, they're public meetings.
Yeah, they are. Ryan and Darlene, our clerk, will be in touch. Any other discussion? All in favor? Aye. All opposed? That motion is carried.
Congratulations.
Adam, if you'd like to make any comments now that you've been through, you are able to, you don't have to, you can save those for when you get sworn in.
Congratulations.
Okay. Announcements?
I'd like to make announcement of the parks. Locking through this morning through Nixon Park, boy, it's really pretty over there. I posted a photo on Facebook because I was just so impressed on how beautiful that's looking around the pond where they're making updates to it. So, nice job DPW and Park.
Good job, Dave.
Yeah, DPW rocking it.
Anybody, anybody else with any announcements?
Well, if you start looking around and you see these big cuts in the woods and some bark laying, like a little path leading in, we've spent a lot of time in Pembroke opening up another walkway. There's a lot of walkways that are adjacent to the Ice Age Trail, they're like little spurs. And if you get a chance, you know, take, take a little walk on some of these paths we have. Put about six or seven inches of bark on there, so, but it's, it's really neat to walk in there and just see where maybe the Indians walked through at one time, you know, and hey, this is, it's an interesting time with, you know, Heartland, you know, with the Ice Age Trail goes right through our town. You know, right through our town, we got these little spurs, and it's just an outstanding thing. And if you get a chance, take a look and just don't say, what the, who the heck did that? See where it goes. I won't say the prizes are in there, but...
Any other announcements?
No.
Chief, Chief Jamrith of the fire department, they flew the flag on September 11th over on, over by Sundix and 16, and so they got a lot of honking, a lot of cheering, a lot of good support for that, so hopefully everybody got to see that.
Any others? I do have an announcement to make. Over the weekend, the Village of Heartland and the presidency's name was called, or the president, the position of the president was called into question in regards or inferences due to racism. I just want to make sure this board knows and the public knows that not only is the Village of Heartland not, and I think everybody knows that, but the village president is not in any way, shape, or form racist. There's only two times in, that I would ever bring that into announcements if the position was brought in, and that would be if it was the allegation of being a rapist or a racist. I think that those are both equally horrifying to see as a person and for a position to be tied to. I want to reiterate, anybody can call the village, they'll give you my cell phone number, it's also on the website, you can call me, or if anybody deems that they feel that they've seen any of those actions occur by the village president or any person of the village, I would like you to call immediately. It is not tolerated, racism is not acceptable, should be stopped in its tracks every time somebody sees it. I was not raised in the South, I was raised in Milwaukee, then I came to Heartland. I'm very thankful to be here, to be accused of being one. It's not something I ever want anybody to have to run into, and the village president and the Village of Heartland is not racist, does not tolerate racism, and that's my announcement. So, any other announcements?
Can I make the motion?
No, no. Don't second that.
Do we have something going on at the Legion Hall Saturday? There was funeral. What? There was funerals off. No, 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 just coming Saturday, is there something going on, the 18th fundraiser or something?
Yeah. Can I play?
You can.
Yes. Okay, yeah.
We're doing a, we're doing a fundraiser, well, yeah, we're doing a fundraiser at the Piggly Wiggly, at the Brat Shack.
Oh, I thought it was a Legion.
So the American Legion Auxiliary, we're raising money for Halloween Haunted Tunnel.
Oh, okay.
That we're doing in business, I think that's what you're talking about, but I don't know.
I don't think so. Something with closing off the parking, I should have brought, never mind, forget I said it.
There was a Pig Roost fundraiser, I just don't recall the date.
Maybe we could get that on the village website.
Sorry, I should have that before I open my mouth.
Is there anything else you want to say about that? No, but I don't know if we checked into the parking lot thing, we would need the whole parking lot. Well, that's for the, that's for the money.
Yes.
All right.
Never mind, I'm sorry.
Do we have any other, any other announcements on that?
I don't think so, no.
Any other announcements? Let's get that motion, item 13. We need, we need a motion.
I'll make a motion to go into closed session pursuant to state statutes 19.851G to confer with legal counsel regarding proposed settlement of the Heartland Riverwalk versus Village of Heartland in the Waukesha County case number 19CV1760.
Yes or no, do you want Adam to, he doesn't, he doesn't?
Need a second.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to go into closed session under 19.851G for consulting with legal counsel regarding Waukesha County case number 19CV1760. May I have a roll call vote?
Aye.
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 Aye. We will go into closed session, we'll take five minutes before we do that. We'll take five minutes before we do that.[603.29]